Quick audio check. Check one, two. Check one, two. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, one, two. Check one, two. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, one, two.
Meeting come to order, please.
Is it working?
Nope.
Debbie, stay with him. The iPad's not working.
Broke off. You press your present button, please. Thank you. Announcements, Joe?
A couple of quick things. First is that the growth management planning effort that we've been engaged with municipalities on is progressing. That's going well. We've got a meeting on the 18th, a week from tomorrow, with that advisory group. We're just about a month behind because of some of the COVID issues that we were experiencing last month, but that's on track. The county's proposal has not changed from the one that I had presented to you previously, but I just wanted to give you a quick update on that one. The second thing is that if there are no objections, we're going to move the election of officers up on the agenda. I think it's listed as at the end. We're going to move it and have that take place just after my announcements, if that's okay with everybody. And speaking of election of officers, and I know that Chairman Lackey is staying on to finish his term, but this is kind of monumental. John has been on the Planning Commission for, I think it's 38 years, and has been chairman of the Planning Commission for the majority of that. He's been the chairman as long as I've been here, all 16 years. During that time, you know, I feel like that we, as a county, have accomplished quite a bit. We've done two separate comprehensive plan updates. We've done a new zoning ordinance. We've done new subregs. We've done special area plans for all four of those villages. We did a comprehensive traffic strategy that I think was sort of the springboard to changing our overall development policy about a year or so ago. And Chairman Lackey not only has been involved and participated in all those things, but in most of those cases, he actually had a strong leadership role. So he has been far more than just a chairman that runs meetings. He has provided tremendous leadership to the commission, but also just in the county in general. Yeah, I feel like he's led with reason and intelligence and always with a focus on what's best for the county. I don't think we'll ever see a run like that. And so on behalf of staff, and I know I speak for the commission as well, I just want to thank you, Chairman Lackey, for your tremendous service as chairman of this committee.
Thank you. Kind words. I appreciate it.
1988 comprehensive plan, too. So he, yeah, so he had three of them under his belt, so.
And that's all I've got, sir.
Okay. Thank you. You're very kind. Election of officers. Which way do we start? Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Nominations are now open for chairman of the Planning Commission, with the exception of one member. Is there a nomination? Okay. Any other nominations? I hear none? Prepare to vote? How do we vote on this thing? Ah, here it is. Go ahead and vote. We have an eight. Motion carries. Thank you. Bring yourself over here. I'm going back over there. You get to play with my notepad. This is for the dubbies. See how big it is?
I appreciate the opportunity to serve Williamson County and this planning commission, so look forward to the adventure. The, so we need a vice chair at this point, and so we'll roll into nominations for vice chair.
Vice chair? John?
No.
I said Don.
Don, yeah.
John Crowhan for vice chair.
Any other, any other nominations? We're ready to vote. Let's move to vote. Don, looks like you're still voting. There we go. Perfect. So that passes. All right.
Secretary Protem.
All right. So secretary, nominations for secretary. We have Mike Madison on the, anything else? Let's vote for that. Don. And secretary Protem, nominations.
I nominate Aaron Wells. I mean, Aaron Holmes. Sorry, I know an Aaron Wells.
Aaron, Aaron has been nominated. Any other motions or nominations? Let's move to vote, please. Okay. Is that all? We're, we're good? Right. So we need to move to a consideration of minutes. Do we have any open discussion on the minutes as presented?
I have an item for revision.
Okay.
Which number was it? There's one that says, "I made the motion and seconded it." It's the last thing in the minutes, like the very last paragraph. So item 15, I did make the motion, but I did not second it.
Okay. Do we need to note who that was, or?
This next time, this may have been one of those things where the voting machine might have, because I usually go by the voting machines, so going back to our discussion earlier.
Okay. So we will, do we have a motion to defer these?
Until we get that clarification.
Perfect. A second. Thank you.
It's not up on here yet as an option.
Yes, it is. All right, we have a motion to defer. Let's take it to vote. Thank you. All right, we're moving towards the consideration of the consent agenda. Okay. Perfect. Robin has recused herself. Is there anything else on the consent agenda before they're considered? And we're no longer reading that, correct? Okay. We've got a motion from Don to accept first staff's recommendation. We have a second from Brian Richter, so let's move to vote on this. Thank you. It passes. Motion passes. President, and, sorry, let me get my turn. Mr. McCord?
On item 13, I need to recuse, please.
Okay. Thank you. So item 13 is a non-residential site plan for the homes at Mulberry Meadows subdivision non-traditional wastewater system on 198 acres located off Talaferna Road in the fifth voting district. So staff?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting site plan approval for a proposed non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system in the Rural Preservation Five zoning district. The proposed system will serve a subdivision that is planned for the property. The county zoning ordinance requires a site plan for a proposed non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system to be approved before a concept plan for the subdivision the system will serve may be approved. The subject property is 198.4 acres in size and is located approximately one mile to the east of Talaferna Road's intersection with Horton Highway. Approximately four acres of the site will be utilized for the proposed non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system, which includes the land application area, treatment facility, and storage pond. The treatment system, which will utilize the packed bed media filter technology to treat wastewater generated by the proposed subdivision, will be located near the western boundary of the site. All individual system components meet the specific setback requirements of the zoning ordinance. A certificate of convenience and necessity has been issued by the Tennessee Public Utility Commission, and a draft state operating permit has been issued by the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. A design development report, as well as a detailed soils investigation report, were prepared by the applicant and submitted to the county. The county's wastewater consultant has reviewed these reports and has concluded that all zoning ordinance requirements relative to non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal systems have been met. The property is relatively flat with clusters of woodlands. The property contains a stream and its tributaries that transect the property. The necessary waterway natural areas for the stream and its tributaries have been established. All ordinance standards with regards to natural resource protection have been met. A conceptual layout for a proposed subdivision on the property, which depicts 27 lots, has been included as Sheet C-2 of the site plan packet. This conceptual layout is provided for illustrative purposes only and has not yet been reviewed for compliance with applicable regulations. It is staff's opinion that the combination of distance and proposed vegetation will serve to adequately screen the treatment system from adjacent properties. A landscaping plan has been submitted and approved by staff. The site plan is in order, and staff recommends approval, with the condition that prior to the submittal of the first final plat for the proposed subdivision, a zoning certificate must be obtained for the completed treatment and disposal system. Prior to issuance of the zoning certificate, the applicant shall provide the following. One, a letter from TDEC indicating that the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system was installed and is functioning. Two, as-built drawings showing the location of all system components, and a sealed certification letter from the design engineer indicating that said system was constructed in accordance with the approved construction plans and specifications. Three, a letter from the owner slash utility provider indicating that it has accepted the system and is currently operating same. Four, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $100,000, $200 for the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system as specified by the county's wastewater consultant. Five, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $55,500 for landscaping improvements. And six, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any points discussion?
I could maybe ask this earlier in the agenda. I was curious, why is this listed under old business? Have we seen this previously? I didn't remember that.
Heard last one.
Okay. Gotcha. It was something that was...
Based on their request.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you.
So we have a motion from Don to accept staff's recommendation. Brian Richter, second. We have any further discussion? Let's move to vote. Thank you. Motion passes. So we can, can somebody grab? Right. Item 14, preliminary plat for the Smithsons Valley Large Lot Easement Subdivision containing four lots on 46.66 acres located off Peytonville-Arno Road in the second voting district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject parcel is approximately 35 acres in size and is located off Peytonville-Arno Road, approximately three quarters of a mile east of Cool Springs Road. The applicant is requesting approval of a large lot easement subdivision in order to create four lots of an extended 50-foot ingress/egress utilities easement, and one lot on Peytonville-Arno Road. The site contains natural resources requiring protection, including steep slopes, slippage soils, a carse feature, and tree canopy. Approximately 47% of the site is under tree canopy. All zoning ordinance requirements, including those regarding the protection of natural resources, have been met. The applicant is proposing individual septic systems for the lots, when the Williamson County Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved the request. Water will be provided by Millcrofton Utility District. No fire hydrants are proposed, and sprinkler systems are to be provided in all dwellings. Building envelopes have been separated by 200 feet. The preliminary plat is in order, and staff recommends approval subject to the following. Number one, notice of coverage issued by TDEC shall be required prior to the signing of the final plat. Number two, a land disturbance permit must be obtained for the overall development. And number three, driveway and drainage infrastructure must be complete, consistent with zoning ordinance requirements prior to submittal of the final plat.
Thank you. Any discussion on item 14? Motion? Second. Motion by Don and second by Brian. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. Moving on to item 15 is a non-residential site plan review for Nolansville Catholic Campus on 168 acres located off Nolansville Road in the fifth voting district. Staff?
This application was deferred from the January meeting in order to allow the applicant This application was deferred from the January meeting in order to allow the applicant additional time to address comments from the county's traffic consultant. The applicant has provided this requested information. The county's traffic consultant has reviewed the additional information and is recommending approval of the site plan from a traffic standpoint. The applicant is requesting approval of Phases 1, 2, and 3 of a church and school campus that will consist of multiple buildings totaling approximately 185,600 square feet. Phase 1 consists of the elementary school. Phase 2 consists of the church and associated buildings. Phase 3 consists of the middle school and concessions for the practice field. A conceptual layout for the entire property showing the four phases of the development has been included as Sheet C-1.01 of the site plan packet. Phase 4 consists of the high school and associated sports fields, which will be built at a later date and will require the submission of a revised site plan. This conceptual layout is provided for illustrative purposes only, and that which is labeled as future development, in other words, Phase 4, has not yet been reviewed for compliance with applicable regulations. The property in question is located on Nolansville Road, approximately four-tenths of a mile south of its intersection with Big Oak Lane. Adjoning properties range in size from approximately .64 acres to 275 acres and are used for either residential or agricultural purposes. The enclave at Dove Lake Development is to the north of the property in question. Water service is provided by Nolansville College Grove Utility District. Wastewater generated by the use will be treated by a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. The county's wastewater consultant has reviewed the proposed system and is recommending approval. The proposed non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system, which will utilize recirculating media filter technology to treat wastewater generated by the proposed church and school, is located on the north side of the site. All individual system components meet the specific setback requirements of the zoning ordinance. The combination of distance and proposed vegetation will serve to adequately screen the treatment system from adjoining properties. The wastewater system will be owned and operated by Tennessee Wastewater Systems. According to the site plan, there will be two access points to the site. The Tennessee Department of Transportation has reviewed and granted conceptual approval of the locations of the access points. The county's traffic consultant has reviewed the traffic impact study and the additional information submitted by the applicant and has recommended approval from a traffic standpoint contingent upon the applicant making a number of roadway improvements. Various roadway improvements associated with various phases include constructing southbound and northbound turn lanes at the southern access point, installing flashing warning beacons, using a school patrol to coordinate AM and PM school peak traffic operations, updated traffic counts, signal warrants, and grading and clearing obstructions such as existing trees and brush to improve site distance. All zoning ordinance requirements have been met, including the specific requirements associated with religious institutions and educational facilities. The submitted landscaping plan has been reviewed and approved by staff. The site plan is in order, and staff recommends approval subject to the following: One, all recommendations specified in the attached letter from the county's traffic consultant must be in place prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for buildings within the corresponding phase of the project. Two, as recommended by the county's traffic consultant, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the buildings associated with Phase 3, in other words, the expanded elementary school, a new traffic impact study shall be submitted for review. Three, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the buildings associated with Phase 1, a zoning certificate must be obtained for the completed non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. Prior to the issuance of the zoning certificate, the applicant shall provide the following: A letter from TDEC indicating that the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system was installed and is functioning; A letter from the owner/utility provider indicating that it has accepted the system and is currently operating same; As-built drawings showing the location of all system components; and a sealed certification letter from the design engineer stating that the system was constructed in accordance with the approved construction plans and specifications; Posting of a performance bond for the treatment and disposal system in the amount of $211,600; and execution of performance agreements for the above referenced surety. Four, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements; Five, submittal to and approval by the county engineer for stormwater calculations and the grading and drainage plan prior to issuance of a land disturbance permit; Six, plating and recording of the wastewater lots prior to the issuance of building permits; Seven, establishment of a performance bond for landscaping improvements in the amount of $200,000; and Eight, all signage must be approved per ordinance requirements.
Robin, you've got the floor?
Thank you. So I just want to confirm, there's the enclave at Dove Lake subdivision next door, and that the... One of the main streets in there is Big Oak Way, which, when you go to the end of the street, it's like a private residence back there. And then there's also Thatcher Road and on, which I think Thatcher Road is actually a cul-de-sac from that subdivision. Just confirming that neither one of those roads will be any kind of access point from the school into the subdivision, just as like a through street. I mean, currently on here, it doesn't state that at all, but just confirming that.
Yeah, Commissioner Valdery, you're right. There will be no connection between the subdivision and this church and school project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? That was Don. Okay, Don?
This is probably in the regulations, but I wanted to make sure the existing pond on there, is that going to be fenced? Seeing how this will be, you know, children in this area and everything, is that in the regulations to fence that?
Can't may be able to give us more information on what they intend, but we don't require that it be fenced.
Sean Decoster with CSDG, representing the applicant. We don't intend to put a fence around the entire pond. We do have the waterway natural area and natural buffer around it, and the areas where the students will be, the playgrounds and any points where they're outside will be fenced in, but the pond itself will not be fenced.
Okay. You don't consider that a safety issue with the children in that area? It would seem to me that would be a safety issue with children cutting through. They don't follow sidewalks and everything else.
The diocese has not felt the need to fence it in. They are fencing in the locations where the children will be outside playgrounds and such.
Well, I agree with everything on this, but I cannot agree with not having some sort of protection around that pond.
Thank you, Don. Any further questions? Do I have a motion? Whoops, sorry, Brian Richter.
Sorry. Pardon me?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion? Bolt here.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, it's passed motion, hasn't it? Okay. Can we back that up, or do we just take a motion the old-fashioned way? All right, I have a motion from...
I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation with the addition of some fencing of protection around the existing pond.
Do I have a second on that motion? Jessica, would you like to speak? Or... We... Yeah, we need a second first on this motion, or... Huh. Or it fails. Yeah. No second? Don's motion fails at this moment. So Jessica, the floor is yours for a question?
I was just going to say, I appreciate the intent, but I'm just going to count on the county staff to make sure, you know, the children would be safe, and if they feel like a fence is needed, that they would require that with the next iteration of approvals required by the county.
Thank you, Jessica. Any further questions or a motion? Have Keith McCord with a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. Do I get a second? Brian Richter, second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval per staff's recommendation. Any further discussion? Let's move to vote. Motion passes. Item 16 was on consent, if I'm correct, and item 17 is done, so are we ready to adjourn? Do we got a motion? All right. Thank you.